Good evening. As a former new matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dwarakesh Nalan.
Present.
Alan Brooks is not here, Todd. Corinne is not here, and we are waiting upon Sierra tomorrow. Town officials, employees, participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Staff assistant Danielle Chamberlain-Roberts.
Here.
Town planner Dr. Adam Menard.
Here.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, May 9, 2023, now called order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid format under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none, accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public will participate remotely. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Would you all please rise and join us in a salute to the flag? All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Unfortunately, we are going to take a 10-minute break because we are missing our third member in order to be able to make a vote.
I checked my email while I was getting this file, and she said she's sick. She won't be in attendance.
Nope, we won't be waiting then. But we, just so you know, we can't vote on anything.
Understood.
But, um, I can't even vote to continue, can I?
No, but it's kind of presumed it's going to be continued. It's a small meeting.
So applicant Kim Lee Horn Associates requesting site plan approval on the Section 3.2.6.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a self-storage facility at 319 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 42, parcel 31. They requested a continuance?
Correct. They are still working on the peer review changes. I'm expecting something for the next meeting.
Okay, so that's going to be automatically continued? And then, um, next up is applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated requesting a site plan approval on the Section 3.2.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a warehouse distribution facility at 190 Washington Street, Lot 1, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 34, parcel 4. Is there anyone here representing Eastland Partners?
I'm here, Mr. Chairman. Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering.
I know there's been some updates with Graves Peer Review. Unfortunately, this will be continued, but I'd like to hear anything you have to say about the things you've changed.
Yep, thank you very much. So yes, you're correct. We do have what I consider a final peer review letter from Graves Engineering dated April 25th. All of the items that I would say are acknowledged except for a couple that require some action by the Planning Board, one would be waiver-related regarding landscape, which is comment number seven. The other comment that probably would require some consideration by the board or condition of approval would be comment number 12, which was a geotech consultant on the two-to-one proposed slope that the applicant is agreeable to and happy to provide. And I believe that concludes any kind of outstanding technical review matters by Graves Engineering. All the other comments, they say, have been acknowledged or, you know, require no further comment from them. For example, comments that would be under the purview of departments in town, fire, water, sewer, building department. So the, you know, making quickly skim through some of the comments that they did acknowledge, if you'd like.
Um, I'm okay. I have a couple of questions. Dwarakesh, do you have any questions?
I think just on comment 10, um, I think there is the...
Oh, sure.
I think we need to understand a little more from DPW, so that'll be something we'll have to settle back with DPW.
Yeah, I can respond to that and see if we have any comments.
That's all I had here.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions regarding this project? Being none, um, on the foundation landscaping plan, I know you're requesting a waiver, but I got to see the new foundation landscape plan. I don't have time to digest it, but...
So this sheet would be the most appropriate, this being the easterly end of the building.
Yep.
We're just requesting that the landscape that your bylaw requires directly between parking up against the general end of the building and then the building, that that be waived. We're providing some other landscaped areas that we believe that supplement that area. So there's landscaping out here, landscaping here, landscaping along this island and along this island here. In order to meet some of the fire department turning radius requests, we really just need this distance here where you would normally like to have foundation plantings per your bylaw. That's the only waiver we're requesting. All of the foundation plantings are proposed. Other parking area plantings are proposed per your bylaw. With the plantings that are proposed on the outer portion of this parking area in this island and around here, we feel as though the intent to screen that end of the building is met, but the specific plantings right along this foundation is the waiver we're requesting.
What's on the parallel to Route 20 in front of the building? Yeah, right along there.
Yep, those are large trees per your bylaw, and then some smaller plantings between.
Do you have any idea what kind of trees those are?
Yeah, I do.
Those are scarlet oaks, the big ones are scarlet oaks.
There's no Norway maples, right?
No, no, no Norway maples.
Next, they're not allowed in town.
Yeah. A landscape architect is, does a lot of work in Auburn. She's very familiar with the bylaw. And yeah, she's usually telling me what she needs to do, and I let her, you know, do that.
And there was another comment that you're going to put the dumpsters on either end of the building?
Correct.
Are they going to be screened from the road?
Yep. Yep, they'll be screened with solid fencing.
Oh, fencing?
Yep.
Um, and then, of course, you go to number 10. I'd like to have the input of the public works.
Sure, I can briefly explain that, too.
Sure.
So the subdivision plan, unfortunately, I didn't bring the subdivision plan, but just from a discussion standpoint, you know, here's a large stone water basin that was designed and approved as part of the subdivision with a few tweak... If you remember, when we designed the subdivision, we accounted for a large percentage of this lot being impervious.
Correct.
I believe 90% impervious. So therefore, we're already making accommodations, you know, for the development of this lot in the design of this basin. So with a few minor tweaks to some pipe inverts and outlet structure orifices, the basin worked because we designed it that way. The subdivision plan showed access to this basin for maintenance. You know, we got along the roadway here, and then an access point along this berm will be here. Nothing has changed with that proposed access. What Graves is saying is that the access on this side of the basin with this site plan, you know, limits the ability for that access to occur. We were never proposing access there. The grading did accommodate for it just by the nature of the grading, but we never designated that area for access. You know, two out of the three sides of this basin are accessible, and that's what we're saying in our response. And Graves says the Plan Board may wish to solicit comments from the DPW to ensure that DPW has no maintenance issues. Now, this is going to be a private subdivision road.
Right.
Maintained by the owner, Lot Owners Trust, which has been established and recorded and everything else.
It's only as good as the trust lasts. So down the road, I can actually see this becoming a town. It may not be, you know, the next 10 years, but it could be 20 years.
Sure, sure. And if that happens, I can be comfortable with all the things that were done for different departments, the access road emergencies, construction materials.
Well, yeah. How deep is that basin?
Bottom contour is 458.
Yep.
And the top contour is 464, but the water doesn't get to 464 because there's a one-foot spillway. So the deepest elevation of water would be five feet.
Okay, so is there a fence proposed around that?
Uh, no.
There should be. We made everybody else do it in town. Just a fence to keep the kids out. You know, if there's five feet of water in there, you know what can happen.
Yeah, and you're right. You have historically, I know the fences, a couple of subdivisions that have been involved with, I mean, the basins have fences, so...
And then, um, on...
Four-foot chain link?
Yeah, four-foot chain link would work, I think, as long as it's, um... I would recommend black. I mean, I get the boards, the rest of them approval. We come back on this, Steve, but I would recommend black because it disappears. You just don't see it.
Sure.
And the post being black, vinyl coated as well.
Now, there's two basins, one basin being part of the site plan application, one not being what was part of the subdivision.
Is that basin, the second one being used down there near, um...
It is built, being used by the subdivision and the Ross, some of the Ross site plan drainage.
How deep is that one, Steve? We have to do a retroactive work on that one. I must have missed it.
So actually, four feet of operating depth in the water.
That should, that'll require a fence, too.
So what I'll do is I'll talk to my client, you know, about doing it. It's a fairly small basin. If we're doing fence around the big one, doing a small one might make some sense. So I don't think it's worth arguing about.
No, especially at cheap insurance.
Yeah.
If somebody climbs over the four fence, it gets hurt. That's hot damn.
Especially when you got a lot owners' trust involved and stuff.
Yeah, and you got a neighborhood right up behind you with kids, so you never know what's going to happen at night. And then on 12, where they recommend a geotechnical consultant be engaged, I mean, one-to-one slope, absolutely, especially 18 feet high, I have no idea what the size of your rip rap's going to be, what the weight's going to be, where you fill in between them, what it's going to be. Do you send them in the dirt? Do you put the matting down first? That's at the, you know, the routine.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, no objection to the geotech consultant providing documentation to the board on means and methods, and then actually the results of testing and compaction and the results of what took place to do it, yeah.
And then on number 17, that's another one-to-one slope. I don't know how deep that channel is, Steve. I mean, if it's one-to-one and it's like two feet high, I really don't care. But if it's one-to-one and it's six feet high, we got to make sure that slope's stabilized.
Yeah.
So you might want to have the geotechnical for that one, too.
Oh, so, okay, yeah, this is just simply the detail. So it's this detail, so when you've got a detention basin, you've got the flat berm on top, and you've got the spillway, they're saying that the side slope...
Right, it should be stabilized with rip rap.
Yeah.
But I don't know how height, what the height is. Was it five feet?
No, a foot.
Four feet?
No, one foot.
Oh, one foot?
Yeah, because it's the spillway elevation, which is always a foot below the top of the berm of the basin. So it's a foot, so it's one foot wide, one foot tall.
Got you. I'm sure you can do the bottom, too. Just do the whole thing.
Yeah.
That's all I had for questions. Do you have any more, George?
No questions.
I appreciate you coming in. I'm sorry to waste your time tonight.
No, it was, you know, good discussion. One thing I think I'd like to report back to the board on is following the last meeting, this client was here, but he couldn't be here tonight. He apologizes. But I can report back to you that the discussion about a condition about occupancy permit...
Still the road improvements?
The road improvements being substantially completed prior occupancy, they had no objection to.
Really?
Correct. Mostly because they feel like it would be in the condition of the building department, kind of like Ross was. So, but again, yeah, no objection at all, so...
You're saying it's going to take about, what, nine months to a year to get that done? Between getting DOT's final approval and getting the work done?
Yeah, I think that's about right.
And you had about a year's worth of work left on the lot to get it done, ready for them?
Right, so it...
So it should coincide?
Lines up pretty well, right.
I can go along with that one. No problem.
And the other thing I promised that I would report back on and be prepared for tonight, which is kind of a fairly brief topic, in my opinion, would be the traffic reduction from this warehouse on this lot as opposed to initially was considered or strongly considered to be an automotive dealership based on some initial interest that was shown. So the traffic from an automobile dealership was significant. And to the tune of, you know, during the AM peak hour, we're looking at 56 vehicle trips. The PM peak hour, 76 vehicle trips. With this new use, the AM peak hour is 36, so that's down from 56. The PM peak hour is 39, down from 76.
That's really conservative. I see you got to get 36. Other than the employees going, there's going to be most of your traffic.
Yeah.
Going out.
And the biggest number is because of the way the automobile sales industry works is Saturday. So Saturday midday peak hour was 162 trips. Now it's down to five. So the totals, the weekday total was 830 trips. That's now down to 200. The weekend, the Saturday total was 1,568. That's now down to 16. So positive, you know...
Huge reduction.
Huge, huge reduction. And the other thing I meant to point out last time, I should have pointed out now, is that with this site plan, the original subdivision showed that this lot would have its own access driveway from Washington Street. That is no longer the case. So you only have the subdivision road as the only entrance off of Washington Street.
But you still have that emergency road that goes down around the whole thing, right, for fire protection?
Yep, we do. But all that does is come right back out to the lot.
Yep.
And the fire department was thrilled about that because, you know, that'll give them the circulation they need.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, but, you know, you can't see it in this picture, but on the front side of this building, so no driveway. And DOT was happy, was actually...
My opinion is if you have one curb cut for the roadway, and that's your access off the entrance roadway to the building, that's better than to have another road curb cut on Route 20.
Yeah, DOT felt the same way because then...
Be safer.
You get into a situation of like acceleration lane, deceleration lane, you know, or they do a weave analysis for the traffic, but that all goes away.
The only thing, if it is going to be a car dealership, whoever buys it or leases it or whatever they're going to do, has to realize you cannot unload cars on Route 20 off the road.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not allowed anywhere in town. It's not, I'm thinking I just...
Yeah, no, no problem. And the good news is it's that the interested parties that we're looking at, this is a car dealership that no longer are interested.
The car dealerships aren't interested, are they?
Yeah, I mean, it seems like this had the potential to be kind of like, you know, the new auto mile with the Lundgren down the street and the Patrick Mazda across the street and, uh... But no, it's just not working out that way.
So what's the point?
Just this 100,000 square foot warehouse.
And they have no prospective tenants?
Uh, there are a couple. I had to sign a nondisclosure, the way that some of these tenants kind of work. But I can tell you that it's not Amazon or anything, and it's not a service that would be what they call a last mile. So like Amazon or something like that. It's nothing like that. It would be more high cube storage. I guess just...
It's not another Ross Express, is it?
Not another Ross Express, yeah. No, it's low traffic, low truck trip, um, storage.
Got you. They're still going to cut down the traffic?
Huge, yeah, huge cut down in traffic. So, but I wanted to report back to you on...
I appreciate that. I know you can't tell who the client's going to be, but you gave us a rough idea.
Yeah, and as soon as, if it does come to fruition and have the green light to, well, you'll know about it.
Well, absolutely.
I understand with the quorum tonight, we can't, there'll be no voting on decisions or things like that.
That gives you time to get the geotech to take a look at it and get the stuff in, so we can take a look at it.
Right. No objection to those sorts of things, you know, from my client's end. So happy to, you know, keep moving forward.
Does anyone in the audience have any further questions? Being none, Dwarakesh, you all set?
There's a caller on the... It's caller five.
Caller five, do you have any questions regarding this development? It's not.
No.
So I'm going to presume that the other members of the board would allow this to be continued. So we're going to continue this to our next, in two weeks. Steve, we'll see you then.
Sounds good.
Thanks for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Next on the agenda is applicant Robert Lemansky for GL McKinstry Trust for a definitive subdivision plan for a two-lot, single-family home development with site improvements on properly located at Claire Drive and Linda Avenue, Auburn, Mass., 01501. This has been continued from our April 11th meeting. You can sit up here, too, if you want. It makes it easier for you.
Okay, keep it simple.
It's easier to converse.
Much easier. Okay.
Just state your name and your address.
Sure, Robert Lemansky, 157 Sunset Drive, Charlton. First of all, let me extend my gratitude for the Planning Board's patience on this project. The issue that we have right now, and I don't know if it's an issue, but my engineer has been having a rather difficult time getting a meeting with Joanna from the engineering department, and that's what we're waiting for. And I think that, and that's Jade DeBois. And Adam, I know he was in contact with you about this, but we'll continue to work on it. So that's where we are. Jade had met with her on April 5th. She didn't have any plans, so dropped off another full set there. And then that was on the 12th, even though we did meet here on the 11th. Then he sent her an email on the 26th of April and with no response. So again, in order to go forward, we need to have her input and go from there and then let them discuss things out. So all I can tell you is, you know, we're going to stay on that, so...
He's made an appointment. She keeps canceling them, or she just gave you an appointment?
Jade shared the emails with back and forth, and I know on the 30th of March, she says, "Hi Jade, I can meet between 9:00 and 12:00 on Wednesday on the 5th." And then, uh... Then there were, then the next, again, you read emails backwards, right, coming up in order to get the order. But it was, uh... This was from Jade. It says, "I'll be there at 9:00 AM Wednesday, April 5th. Thanks, Jade." And then Jade did go there on the 5th and gave her all of the plans that she had asked for. And then Crickets thereafter didn't hear from her.
Fifth of April?
In the very, in April.
Okay.
Right, right, so, um, excuse me, Adam, I'll share this with the board. That's what Jade had sent me as far as his bar goes. And again, I'm not here to complain. Again, the board has been, like I said, has been very gracious. Maybe some, as all of us have, crazy things happen in our life at times, maybe there's some issues there. I mean, more than likely, hopefully not, and Joanna and Jade need to get together and hash out whatever they need to hash out, so...
Read.
I can follow with DPW. It's nice race with, um, last week, so they know we're waiting for something from them, so...
All right, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm sure she's not reviewing the plans herself. She has a couple of PEs in the DPW, and maybe one of us has been a little sicker or something. I don't know. It could be that. And she's still overwhelmed.
Too many cooks?
Oh, no.
No, no, yeah. It's too much work. It's too much work.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just let me share this with you. When I graduated high school, the populate in 1965, the population in Auburn was 15,000. You know what the population is today?
Probably 60,000.
It's barely over 60,000.
Yeah.
And when you think about, about the, not the residential growth, but the commercial growth in this town...
It's been huge.
Enormous, enormous. And of course, you know, five people can't live in a Cape house anymore. You know, they need eight bedrooms, whatever. It just seems everything has to get bigger. But in the olden days, there was room for the five plus the grandmother.
I've been here since 77, and the biggest thing in town was the Auburn Mall. The Legion was a little tiny building in front of the police station on Southbridge Street.
Yeah.
Where Arby's was Gino's.
Sure.
I mean, and where Bentley's is was a gas station.
That's right, Noble, I believe, yeah.
And then the Exxon station out here, Route 20, which is now Major League Roast Beef. That was Kentucky Fried Chicken before that.
Correct.
Yeah.
It may have been a gas station prior to that.
It was that. It was a gas, Exxon gas station.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, it's good. And I mean, this project that's going on here, it's a huge project.
It is.
Yeah, yeah. And I mean, our town, we've got the Amazon building, $380 million. It's insane.
It's enormous.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. It's lit up at night. I mean, the inside...
Oh, they don't, right.
The one you see for mess, mess paint?
Yeah. It's off in the distance.
Yeah, yeah.
They had one of the biggest excavators up there ever, Cat 900.
Yeah, it was an equipment extravaganza as far as what was going on and what they were moving. You talk about, I hear you talk about the geo grid. They have a wall there. It's got to be 45 feet tall. It's, it just goes straight up, and I think what they do is you lay out that cloth and layer after layer after layer.
Do they have it in wire containers?
No, I can't. It looks like someone just...
It's tough to see it, but if you go over to the Blackstone Mall...
Yes.
And you'll see the stone on the 146 side.
That's right. They placed the, up and...
That's not just stone. Those are in galvanized wire containers.
Oh, those are wire containers.
Yep, they call it gabions.
So in order for something to move, it all has to move.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Amazing, amazing.
Oh, it is. It is. Must be nice to have money, is all I can say.
I keep on, I keep on looking at the wall there at the corner of 12 and Water Street. It's got the hotel up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but hey.
That's been there a long time, though, that wall.
And again, we're talking about walls. What about the Home Depot wall?
Oh, yeah.
In West Auburn.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's... Yeah, and it's still working. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Yes, no. I'm sure Jay will be in touch with you. Adam, thank you again. Have a good evening.
I don't think there's any sensitivity in addressing anything else on the agenda.
No.
Because they can't put on anything. There's no new business by me. There's no new business by you who's there, other than we still need an alternate.
I do have to comment, Danielle, the meeting minutes, especially the last one, were really helpful because I missed it and I think the description on the one ninety was actually very helpful, so. Thank you.
I'll say something after we're off the air. It's not bad. Being that there isn't anybody else here, there's no other applicants, we don't have enough people up here for the board to make any votes, I am just going to make the motion myself to adjourn the meeting. If there's no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting as of right now.